[Music] 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 [Music]
Okay, let's call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of Bella Vista City Council Work Session for April 21, 2025. First item on the agenda is review of minutes. If you have any comments on that, okay. I will just briefly mention about the financials. We did get the financials for the period ending January 31. And the, you know, we have a cautionary note. The Director of Finance and I talked about this because it's only one month. But the city sales tax was up 18.8% and the county sales tax was up 7.7%. Overall revenue was up 7%. And the expenses were 11.6% less than last year. So we're off to a good start. But, but, you know, it'll take a number of months to have a feeling about that, a better feeling about that. Kim, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything?
Well, all I wanted to add was, um, we, I'm working on the February statements. And the good news is, is sales tax is up again for February. Uh, so, uh, that's really good news. And I just wanted to give you guys some, some like national and state information. So, sales tax in Arkansas is up by about 2% nationally. So this January relates to the Christmas season. And, um, nationally, online sales were up by 8.6% nationally. So that's why we see the big, the big jump. And all sales up nationally 4%, okay? So, um, Northwest Arkansas did much, much better than the rest of the state and the nation. Uh, our Northwest Arkansas is up about 9%. Springdale, I think it was 9.9.3, I think is what they were up. Nope, 9.03. And Bentonville was 6.9 and Fayetteville was 6.3. So we did here, we did as well, if not better than the rest of the nation did. So I kind of wanted to give you, so that's good news because, you know, as we talk about things like this, you know, one month does not a trend make, right? If it's up one month, you can't expect it to be up the next month. Uh, we've had months where the sales tax can go up because the state made a mistake the prior month. And it will be less the prior month than it should have been. So there can be all sorts of reasons. But I think that, uh, January and February were a sign of a really strong, uh, Christmas season. And, you know, for our sales tax revenue, I hate to say it, I really hate to say it, but inflation is a good thing because we get more sales tax revenue when prices are going up. You know, as long as people aren't buying less, when, when that pain point hits in, kicks in, then people will buy less and our sales tax will crash. So are there any questions about that? Does that all make sort of sense? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks for checking into that. Uh, then we can go into the new business. The first resolution is approving Mayor's appointment of Linda Feith to the Tree Advisory Board. And that's for a three-year term. And I believe that Taylor sent you out the resumes that people applied so you could see them. And the next one-
Are we okay to put that on consent agenda?
Yes.
Any objection to that? Okay.
Good, good point. And I guess the minutes would be on there too.
Yeah, the minutes are always on.
Okay. Next one is a resolution approving the Mayor's reappointment of Mike Ab to the Tree Advisory Board for a three-year term ending May 1, 2028. He's currently chairman and came to speak to us recently. Is that okay for consent agenda? Okay. Okay, let's see. Item B is approving the Mayor's appointment of Cody Moore to the Bella Vista Board of Construction Appeals for an Unexpired Term Ending January 1, 2026. And that's relatively short-term because it's, uh, to replace Wade Stewart who resigned. He moved out of state. That was a big loss because he's a good tennis player. Things happen. Anyway, uh, I don't know if you've got his, his resume?
I don't think so.
Anyway, I asked the chief for it today and it was impressive so we can get you all copies of that.
Thank you.
Is that okay for consent agenda? Okay. Let's see. Next one's a resolution authorizing the Mayor and City Clerk to enter through a contract with APEC Central in the amount of $101.25 per ton for asphalt street resurfacing hot mix overlay. And authorizing for a contract with Vance Brothers in the amount of $288 per square yard for slurry street resurfacing. And, uh, I don't know if Karen or Dan or Karen's here, you want to say a few words about that?
Yes, um, this is our annual street resurfacing program. And we do it every year. We put out for bid hot mix asphalt laid in place as well as a slurry seal treatment. Um, we put, we advertised for two weeks publicly. We did the open bid. And for this year, we had three responses in hot mix, which is typical for Bella Vista, and one for the slurry seal. Of the three bids, we received APEC appears to be the lowest bid at 101.25 per ton. And when you multiply that out by how many tons we put out there, it's a big savings to the city compared to the other two. On our slurry seal, for every year that I've been here at the Street Department, Vance Brothers has been the people who bid. They work this region. We only had the one bidder on that. And so not a whole lot of competition there, but their price was $2.88 per square yard installed. We do a unit price on these. So based on the unit price, we could either add length or deduct depending on what we were estimating the numbers to come in at. And so we will, this, we will use our budget for that, our approved budget. We have two that affect our hot mix. One is for new construction roads. And then the other one is our usual capital budget for resurfacing hot mix. Both of these items would be within our budget that City Council's approved. Do you have any questions for me that I can help clarify?
I just wanted to mention, we were happy with the hot mix because it was $1.11 a ton last year. So we were guessing higher than we got. So the $1 a ton is, is the good news.
All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, I was thinking something like that probably wouldn't be on consent if we go through a resolution.
Larry says no, so.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, heads up. Okay, next one's a resolution amending the 2025 city budget to reappropriate unspent donation revenue to various departments from 2024. Uh, Kim, could you give us a breakdown on that?
So in your packet, we're gonna have, um, a list of donations by department and by use. So each year, we go through this exercise. And all we're doing is saying that this is amount of money that's been donated for these purposes to the city. Uh, and we're making sure that we don't spend that, uh, another way. We want to respect the donor's wishes. So we go through and we assign these. So the, the difference is it's an assignment. So if the council wishes at any time, they can basically revoke that assignment. But in general, the council in the past has decided that they would like to continue to honor the wishes of the donor. And so we just go through this, uh, step and reassign, if you will, those monies that were donated during the year. We have some, we, we have an incredibly generous city, to put it mildly. Any questions?
I don't see the breakdown. Did I have that?
Okay, I didn't have the breakdown on it.
We just have a total.
No, they have the, um-
I'm sorry.
That was on, that was an attachment to the, no, this is all I got for attachments.
Oh, okay. You have it for Monday and I-
Thank you.
Do I need to come back or do you, do you have any specific questions that I can tell you? I, I can give you the amounts per group if you like, or you can wait till Monday or what would you like to do?
Question for you, isn't it an attachment to the resolution or is it an attachment to the memo?
I don't know. I thought it was an attachment. I thought I had-
It's an attachment to the resolution. It's incorporated, incorporated into the, into the resolution.
Okay, good.
But it, the, we have a budget amendment, but it's for the total. It doesn't-
So the $380, $6,000 is at the total?
Yes.
Are you able to email us the breakdown?
Certainly. Um, is it not in the resolution? Because in the past, what you've done is say, broken down as the following.
Yeah, I, I said, what I, what I, the one we did last year, it's the very same one.
Let me look at it now.
Here by council, here by means of 2025 city budget to reappropriate unspent donation revenue to various departments from 2024 in accordance with the attached exhibit, which is incorporated into this resolution as it's set out word for word in. And so then the document with the numbers is incorporated.
Okay, so it is there.
Well, we don't have it. We just have the words he just-
The attachment is, the attachment, the correct attachment is not there.
Okay, so you didn't get the correct attachment either?
No.
It wasn't in, I guess, the attachment that we got, I didn't realize it needed to be broken down. I mean, there is an attachment that was put in Civic Plus that's for the total.
Okay, I got you. I, I can send it out in just a few minutes. I thought it was, I thought, I thought I attached it.
So that's a breakdown that you're setting up?
Thank you so much.
Yes, do you, do you want to know any specifics now? Because I, I have it up on my screen because I thought you might have questions.
If, I mean, if you want to tell us, that's great, but-
Yeah, you want to just read it out?
Sure.
At the bottom.
I don't know what she's talking about. No, I mean, there's, there is an attachment in the packet that says budget adjustment, budget amendment. It's got a total.
Yes, so for, uh, for planning, the Legacy Racing Group has donated money to the tune of about $35,754. Um, there's PD car seats for $90. General PD use is $15,270. Um, the K-9 department has $100. Fire department has $52,433. Um, the ambulance is at, uh, ambulance grant revenue is at two, uh, actually, that's grant revenue, little different. I'll skip that. Hazmat is on here, but that's a little different too. That's $32,000. Library donations for young adult is at $2,142. For general use is 2,000, I'm sorry, $246,134. And then, um, yeah, that's, that's the last one. So, yeah. So we, we have really generous people in the city.
Do we have plans for the general use?
For the library?
No, just for the general-
Is it going to the general fund or?
No, these are specifically to the library.
The general, general use?
That was general use for the library.
Oh, wow.
Library, general use. Yeah, nobody donates to, uh, street.
Okay.
By hand.
You take it.
I T, um, note, 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 we're, we're accepting donations. But that's a general use for the, uh, library.
Was that from like the Friends of the Library group?
No.
Okay.
No, that's up, by the way, $196,000 from last year. They got a very large, nice donation.
So when were these donations collected? Like just-
Third year. Um, that's the total unused portion. So keep in mind that, uh, and-
It is just what was unused.
So we have carryover from prior years?
Correct. So, um, back in, um, I'm going to get this year wrong, uh, two years ago. February 2023, not going to get it wrong. February 2023, City Council adopted a rule that allowed us, allowed the departments, if they get a donation during the year, it is automatically appropriated and available for them to spend without City Council approval. Because prior to that, if they wanted to spend, let's say that the, let's say that legacies, uh, I'm sorry, that planning wanted to spend $60,000 and they got another 20, right? They would have had to come back to you in order to appropriate that money, that extra money into the budget to spend it. But now it is considered appropriated the moment it's donated. They can spend it. So this is unused after 2024.
So are these all of the funds that you have that are moved into this account then?
To the current year, yes. Is that what you're asking me?
Yeah, so this one's sitting on the shelf.
Correct.
Now, if we get another donation on one of these funds, um, from what you're saying, it would be automatically added to the account this year or whatever it would be. So if it's $1,000, they got another 500, it would then be 1,500 at that point in time.
Correct, exactly. Whatever additional, whatever additional donations they get, they can use. We had that happen. The reason we did that, Larry, I think you were here, was, I think it was PD got a big donation for a K-9.
Yep.
And so we wanted to stop having come, they got $10,000. So they had come to council to get that appropriated in the budget in order to spend it. So we said, going forward, let's just-
Consider the current year and the rule that you've just passed.
Right, because it's not going to impact the net end of year budget, right? Because it's, it's, they're not going to spend more than what they collected during the year or this amount. Good question.
How much did you say the library was up this year from last year?
Um, approximately, uh, just shy of $200,000.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I show that they got a large donation of, let's see, what's that amount? Uh, they got, in donations in 2024, they got 207,000.
We had sizable bequests and wills from very generous people that have asked. And, um, in fact, I don't, you know, some of this carries over from year to year. So I don't know if, but they, you know, some of this, like I said, might not have all been collected last year. I had to defer on that.
That, that, uh, we had a large one this year and we had a large one last year. So they've had, through the years, they get pretty-
Like 20,000, $10, $20,000 or something like that. And then it was in the tens of thousands.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Kim. So that was amending the city budget. I guess, do you want to put that in consent or not? Okay, next one is a resolution authorizing an agreement between City of Bella Vista and City of Grabbit regarding cost sharing of improvements to High Wasi Road. I think Karen is gonna talk about this.
In September of last year, the City of Grabbit reached out to our department about their intentions of paving High Wasi Road from 72 up to Highlands Boulevard. That portion of High Wasi Road, the most southern belongs to Grabbit, the northern tip to S, and in the middle, it's about a 50/50 split. So in order to do that, they wanted to make sure we were on board so it could be one complete pave at one time seamless. They didn't know at that point if it was going to be a 25 or a 26 project on their end. And then around Christmas time, they reached out and said, we're aiming for 2025. So we earmarked our portion in our resurfacing budget to make sure we had those funds marked. Like I said earlier, we put so much out to bid. I asked Grabbit, well, how many roads are you guys putting out to bid? They were only going to do the one at the time, which means for the unit price, their price probably would have been higher. In fact, they gave a proposal just for budgeting purposes and it was higher. So we offered to flip it around completely as oversee the contract and then reimbursed Bella Vista for their portion. We did the math on that and it will save both cities money. We've done this in the past for other, um, Spinker Road. We shared with Bella, or Benton County. We've done some RDOT projects like where Hampstead meets 71. So it's not unusual for us to work with our sister cities to have one solid even pavement at one time for maintenance. And that's what this is. It's given us an opportunity to work collectively with the City of Grabbit, our sister city, and get that road taken care of.
So there's a breakdown of-
There, there is in your packet.
Yeah, in the packet. And so, and there's also, there's also a map that's turned, but, but, uh, High Wasi Road is the road that runs from Highway 72 and High Wasi Grab, City of Grabbit, High Wasi. Basically due north to Highlands Boulevard. And then, um, I mean, I'm not trying to steal your-
No worries.
But so there's a portion of it that's exclusively of Bella Vista that is important. And you said this, there's a part that's half and half and then there's a part that's exclusive to the City of Grabbit. And if, I didn't do the measurements, but I think that the rates were determined based on linear feet.
Correct, that is correct.
So there's, there's about half of it that's all Grabbit. About another piece, which is divided half and half of Grabbit. And then there's a piece near Highland Boulevard that's all ours.
Correct.
That's the orange part.
Yes, and you should have in there like the project scope where it lists the linear fee, how many tons we're expecting per each segment.
So this, this estimate here is based upon our old bidder?
Mm-hmm, correct, that is correct.
So it still could, could vary a bit because of unit quantities that we're paying on.
Correct.
We're not paying on the bottom line, we're paying on unit price.
Correct.
They put in 10 widgets or 11, change in 10 or 11 rather than nine.
Yes. So there's a scope breakdown of everything that each section would require and an estimate on what we're expecting that to cost.
I think a lot of Bella Vista would use that road to get from the Highlands down to Highway 72.
Yes, that's another one of the benefits-
Think that our people, whether it's in our city or-
Of us working together is that the downtime to resurface it, Grabbit's not doing it, they're separate than our portion. There won't be seams in between the two portions or different age of those sections. So I think it just shows our willingness to work with our sister cities.
Or even a different mix design between-
So that's what that was about. Okay, then we had several discussion items. The first one is Republic Waste Recycling. Jennifer Fagan, uh, the manager of Renewable Sales is here. And by happenstance, we had a public meeting last week of-
Can I just get, excuse me?
Yeah.
Did we put that on consent or not? Give me a second.
No.
Okay.
Nice, it's just simple.
Okay. I didn't hear something.
Hi, Jennifer, thanks for coming.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Fagan, for those that don't know me. Um, and I'm the municipal manager for Republic Services. Uh, the gentleman in the back here with the matching shirt is my general manager, Jason. And, uh, he's been with us about a year here at our location and proudly calls Bella Vista home. So, um, Travis had wanted me to come and speak a little bit about recycling. So I wanted to kind of give you a history of, I've been here 23 years, so we can go way back, but, um, a history of what we've done over the years regarding recycling. Um, when I first started back, I, in years ago, the recycling program, some of you may know, was a blue bag program. Um, people would sign up with us, get on our route for recycling. It was once a month and they would purchase blue recyclable bags at Walmart. And our drivers would go by once a month and, and put those. We had rearload trucks back then and they had little, oh, contraptions built underneath them and they'd put those bags in there and then set them at the end of some of the streets and then a supervisor would come through and grab them. Um, this went on for quite a while. Um, we didn't have much participation. You know, obviously, the AARP has the location there in, in Bella Vista that a big majority of the citizens here in Bella Vista support. And rightly so, um, you know, the money comes back into the community and there's some great things about it. Um, so in 2017, um, through the cart process and automating our trucks, uh, we took a hard look at the recycling program. Out of 13,000 residents or homes, we had just a little bit over 300 people participating. Um, so, uh, the council at the time and everybody looked at it and just felt like, you know, it wasn't worth continuing at the time because everybody utilized the drop-off facility. Um, so that's kind of how we've worked. There was language before in the contract that said, you know, if something happened at the recycling facility, uh, drop-off, shut down or something, uh, then we would revisit it. Um, and that's just kind of how, how it's- And that's just kind of how, how it's progressed over the years. I know the demographics of Bella Vista have been changing over the years, and we've had people reach out to us about curbside recycling. We're certainly not opposed to it at all. We do it in Bentonville, we do it in P Ridge. P Ridge, everybody pays for it, um, it's every other week. And if they want to participate, they get a card. If they don't, they don't, they, they don't get a card. And, uh, Bentonville's the same way. It is once a week in Bentonville, and, uh, we offer those same exact services. As many of you know, uh, recently, in the last year, the Marx Recycling Center burned to the ground. At first, the plan was they were going to turn around and reopen, uh, within 60 days. And here we are a month later, and that hasn't happened, nor have we really heard, you know, what the progress is going to be. So currently, what we're doing with our recyclables is we take them, uh, to the transfer station in a dedicated area, and then we load them up in the back of an 18-wheeler, and then we truck them to Springfield, Missouri, to our recycling facility. Uh, we do own that facility in Springfield, Missouri, and, and so that's why it's going there now. One of the things that we've always looked at with the recycling is obviously the cost. As you guys are well aware, there are many, many miles of Bella Vista. Uh, we run five trash routes a day picking up trash in Bella Vista. So essentially, you look at that same, um, kind of logistical plan, if you were going to do recycling, we would probably try to look at doing it every other week if it's something they, that you all wanted. It, there's a, it, it's costly. I mean, there's just no other way to put it. You have to have a truck, you have to have the labor, and the only difference is you don't take it to a landfill. You take it to a recycling drop-off or recycling process facility. And for the last three, four years, that cost more than a landfill, ever since China Sword happened in 2018. So those are some of the obstacles that, that we face. We're open, if that's, you know, if the council wants to try to move in that direction of trying to get some kind of program together. Obviously, to have people subscribe to it, um, it just raises the cost up even more. You know, you have to have some type of minimum number for it to even make sense, uh, just for it to be cost-effective. But I do know in the past that, um, people come out in groves when, when you want to take away the recycle drop-off. And it's not that we would take it away, but if we offered mandatory, not mandatory, but curbside service where everybody paid for it, they would have problems sustaining any kind of volume. We've talked to them in the past about, you know, bringing volume to them. And it's just too labor-intensive, and they'd, you know, everything's separated there at that facility. So that's kind of the history and the where and the why of, of where we are today with it. Like I said, we're not opposed to anything the council wants to look at. I know we're working on, you know, we have a contract that's ending with some possible extensions and stuff. So, you know, we could start working on whatever, whatever direction you guys want to give. We completely support the recycling drop-off and what it does for the community. And we don't want to overstep unless that's where the city directs us.
So would it ever be possible to, to revisit with that recycling center to see if you did offer a curbside pickup that it, it could be taken there now? Maybe something's changed since then, I don't know. They, they, whenever I talked to them, they seemed kind of open to the idea, but they did mention that it's already, um, it's separated there, and that's a big cost that if they got it and had it sorted, I don't think they could handle that. It's mostly volunteer, but if, I don't know, maybe, can we revisit that conversation with them?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Larry?
What type of things do you recycle at Springfield? You say you, you load it up in a semi and haul it up there and process it up there. But what kind of things do you deal with up there? And what do you do with, how do you dispose of them after you've separated them again?
Um, we recycle just your, your main things, cardboard, uh, the metal or aluminum, one and two plastics, paper. What am I missing? Am I missing anything else?
No, that's pretty much it. It is actually, to speak to your point, just one thing I wanted to add. So I'm sure everybody's seen the Bella Vista Transfer Stations you talked about, kind of revisited with the recycle center. Imagine an operation like the Bella Vista Transfer Station. That is generally what would be needed at the recycle drop-off facility. You know, you think about just a normal residence coming and dropping off, you know, cardboard, plastic, things of that nature. Imagine six tons, six to eight ton being dumped at one time. That would be what would be needed to intake that type of volume at the recycling center. That would be ideal for us to work together and partner. The infrastructure that would be needed for them to build, I think would be hard to get across finish line.
Yeah.
Although you guys do have a lot of people that do donations.
Isn't there a way to get those numbers and like what cost would look like if this was implemented? Or what the number of buy-in from citizens would need to be? Is it, able to get the information to us?
I can give you some kind of rough numbers and stuff. I mean, we wouldn't know, obviously, the most cost-effective way for everyone would be to make ever, it be a part of the, of the bill.
And then you choose to participate or not?
Mm-hmm, and that is what Bentonville does and, and P Ridge. And, you know, people can participate if they want to, or they can continue to keep dropping it off. Either way works. I will tell you, years ago, we visited with Benton County Solid Waste District also. They had an operation there outside Cenotown. And we offered to bring, you know, one or two loads a week to them, and same thing. You know, it, it is the labor-intensive and the infrastructure that's needed. Now, in Springfield, once, once it's processed, to your question, to answer your question, um, then they, it, they are a regular recycling processing facility. That is all they do. So, you know, they have different buyers that buy the commodities, and, and then they're trucked wherever. They do partner with some industrial companies there that utilize and buy some of the product from them. You know, but obviously, it fluctuates in pricing and everything, and, and some things aren't, are worth anything.
So you mentioned cardboard, aluminum, metals, what are the other ones? Paper, do you have to do?
Paper or one and two plastics.
What about glass?
Uh, we do not do glass, no. And the reason being for that is a safety issue, and then it tears the equipment up.
Yeah, I'm told in Fayetteville, they have a recycling program where whoever operates that, they kind of sort it on-site. So is that, would that be a possibility here? Because then maybe we could take it to our local recycling center, so.
Our current equipment, uh, trucks don't allow for that. You know, obviously, there's lots of things we can do. It's just, you know, there's money attached to it all.
They utilize a secondary truck system. So they have the waste management truck that comes through, and they have a secondary recycling truck where it sort gets out in your yard and like sorts it. And then the things that were not supposed to be, the no-nos can toss back into your yard before you pick it later.
It has different departments. It's like, if you see those deals set up at Sam's that have the roll-offs, that have the different bins, it's along that same idea. I will tell you, as a company, um, single-stream recycling is what we call it, where you can put everything together. It, people participate more so on that than they do when they have to separate it out.
I was wondering if you had, could give an idea of what percentage of people, say in Bentonville, what percentage of people participate, and how much does it cost?
Um, I don't remember what the, what they pay monthly. It's in their trash fee for resident, you know, it's all combined together. I'm going to say roughly 16, 17 dollars. But I would say at least once a month, we probably have about 80, 85% participation. The biggest problem we face with everything is the continuation. Um, one of the things we do in Bentonville is an extra trash cart because they want people to recycle. An extra trash cart is more expensive. And while that's good to try to get people to recycle, a lot of times they use that recycle cart for extra trash. Whereas here in Bella Vista, we wanted everybody to put stuff in a cart, so we offered that second trash cart for, it's like under $3. So that would be something that we'd have to revisit and everything as well. Because you've, you know, you want to give a reason, right, to participate.
So you'd look at probably automated loading from this, from this, uh, locations, sites like you do now?
Yes.
An automated loader that dumps the carts. So you'd be looking at a cart scenario, probably the same size so that you can use the same equipment that you have? Is that?
Yes.
Good sense? So it might be oversized for a lot of people, but undersized for some others?
Right. And then we would do, just like the trash, we would offer an extra cart for recycle as well. They have a different colored lid. The only problem is when it snows, then you can't tell, you know, what, what color the lid is with the snow on top of it. But, um, yeah, it would, it would basically be the same exact operation. It would just be a matter of where it went.
And so you collect it in a, a truck that compresses it, and, and then you take it back to where?
We would take it to Bella, currently, we would take it to Bella Vista to the transfer station.
Transfer station, but you have a separate area that you designate for that?
Mm-hmm.
Which is not there now, correct?
It is, yes, that's what we're doing right now. We just have certain times that we, that we can dump it. We don't dump it twice a day like we used to.
Okay. So then how frequently, if you do, if you do every two weeks, uh, can you do the whole city in one day? No.
No, we would, we would...
If you do it over five days?
We would probably quadrant it off and have A, B, and A week and B week. And that's, you know, we'd have a calendar and section of what's A and what's B. And it might be on their same day. It would depend on participation and how we worked it. But if we did some type of subscription, um, I mean, you're talking, it's going to, it's going to be basically the trash price. So they'd be paying basically double. And, and like I said, we'd have to have some kind of minimum, and it may be even higher than that.
Oh, it wouldn't be double because you're only doing one pickup in two weeks versus two, right?
Yes, in theory, you're right. However, if it was subscription, we'd be driving 15 miles to get one person, 10 miles to get somebody else, as opposed to picking up 10 homes in a half-mile stretch.
Most people don't appreciate the prices. So, uh, the reason the garbage price is good as it is is because of volume.
Right.
Most everybody's in.
Well, I'll give you an example. You know, we have the yard waste program, and I lived in Bella Vista for years, and I, you know, I had the same issue with my leaves and everything. Out of 13,000 people, we have less than 700 that participate in it here. If we didn't combine it with Bentonville and have the compost facility, uh, to, to drop it off at, we wouldn't be able, I mean, it wouldn't even be close.
More expensive.
Exactly.
So what do they pay now for that service?
It is 15-something a month, and it's billed eight months together. It's April through the end of November, and they pay for all eight months, whether they use it one month or when, because...
You're not talking about yard waste, are you?
Mm-hmm.
Can you send us the price for that as well?
Sir, I can tell you if you want to...
One point's a, a thing for two that's easy to get overlooked if you're not necessarily in the industry, is when you run, you know, MSW Municipal Solid Waste and Recycle at the same time, so as you mentioned, A and B week. That's another asset, so that's another truck on the road. So arguably, you know, for, right now, we're running five trucks per day. You very easily could be in the eight to nine to potentially 10 trucks running Bella Vista at the same time versus just your normal five. So it's, you know, when you think of just wear and tear on assets, things like that. The other challenge is recycle doesn't pack like MSW. So if we can run a route that has 900 stops on it, we potentially could get all of that into one truck. You're looking at another two loads potentially, you might as well just chop them half. Because, you know, car, just, just imagine your trash can trying to push down pizza boxes, milk jugs, those types of things. It doesn't pack, so that's, that's the other challenge with recycle. So just something to kind of think through is you guys kind of, kind of navigate maybe what you guys would like to see from a council perspective. That's just another piece that sometimes does get overlooked.
What, what kind of fuel mileage do those trucks get?
Four gallons?
Five miles, four miles to the gallon.
Is that full or empty?
It, it's hard to gauge, um, you know, typically, we don't, we don't even try to, to identify fuel mileage because the other side of it is you're burning fuel while you're packing. So it's kind of a false positive, false negative, however you want to look at it from a fuel perspective. Because, you know, if you ever heard the garbage truck, when they, when they pack the blade, truck revs up to roughly 18 to 2100 RPM. So that's the equivalent of running 40 mile an hour on the road.
Really?
I'm glad he was here.
So, Jennifer, you would expect maybe an 80 to 85% participation rate?
I, possibly. I mean, in Bentonville...
Is that based on Bentonville or is that based on...
That's based off Bentonville. And P Ridge's, uh, participation is going up. You know, they're, they're seeing a lot of new people, new houses being built. And, you know, it's the same thing, it's included in the rate. Now, two of the big things, obviously, that differentiate here, the commercial is included in the agreement here, but there's substantially, obviously, in Bentonville substantially more commercial. So that, you know, it's a kind of a package deal. And same thing with P Ridge, there's quite a bit more commercial as well.
So in the event that it wasn't financially doable for us, would, would, would it be possible for a third-party company that can sort it on-site and bring it to our local nonprofit recycling center? Because we've been told in the past that the reason why they can't do that is because of the contract the city has with Republic.
That's something we could, could discuss. The problem you get into, and Benton County Solid Waste District did this years ago, is they started doing that and picking up, uh, businesses and stuff that, and they didn't charge anybody because that's the big thing, anybody can do it, they just can't charge anything. Part of that is we pay franchise fees to you guys to pick up what we're doing. The current, I, I don't have the yard waste rates, but I do have the trash rate, and it's 1748 and 1573 is paid to us. And the rest, I think, um, is billing, or I don't, I don't know, it's an admin fee, but, um, part of the problem is they're around whenever things are good, when the commodities are good. If you see these car, cardboard, um, uh, they're almost like chicken coop deals around and stuff. You know, those will start popping up when cardboard is, is worth a lot of money, and then they don't show up. And, um, I know that there's been a, a guy that's been wanting to do it and everything. You know, it's the same thing. We can talk further about it and everything. It's just we don't want to get blamed for somebody else's, you know, we don't want them to group us in because they don't get picked up on that service.
Have you guys ever used, or utilized the, the sorter-type bin things? I know that...
Like what you talked about with Fayetteville?
Yeah.
Uh, years ago, they, I have not never done it, but years ago, Republic has. But you just don't get the participation like you do with single sorter. You know, people just, they want it easy.
Well, I just didn't know with how popular the, uh, recycling center that we currently have. I mean, with participation with that, people would be more inclined to use it if they only had to have to drive to, you know, Allen's instead of all the way down or whatever, you know, to, to get to, you know, to get the recyclables, you know, to a point, you know?
I, uh, you know, I don't know. I just, I know that that facility seems like people really, I mean, it's like on their list every week.
Yeah.
And they visit with them, and it's just, it seems like it's a part of the community.
Because if it's just not around, yeah, it's the only option, so it has to be on the list because we don't have other options.
Well, I know the last mayor was very reluctant to do curbside recycling because of the recycling center. That it would destroy, basically, there is five to seven paid employees there.
And then they donate all their money back to the city. And no offense, I don't know that Republic would do the same, so we would pay money to a corporation. How much money is that though?
Look, I don't know if it goes to the city.
Yeah.
I mean, there are two, two things in this.
Yeah, it carries and stuff, yeah, but...
And we haven't covered, no one donates to the city, yeah.
Okay. The only, the last question I have is just to remind you, I'm, I'm really interested in the yard waste pickup prices. If you'll send those to us. I think, um, maybe, maybe I, uh, overestimated people's interest in recycling because the 300 people is disheartening because it seems like, based on the conversations I've had, a lot more people are interested in it.
But that's in 2017, almost a decade.
I have a long question.
Not longer than?
I know.
A long time ago now. So I think you mentioned, um, yard waste or some other pickup projects where we've kind of tacked on to, to Bentonville. So is there opportunity to have a larger contractor than the county where we could average out the cost across Bella Vista?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, their cities are...
Yeah.
You mean, they don't want a higher cost?
They're not going to think one penny more of their citizens of Bella Vista.
They're not going to think one penny more of their citizens of Bella Vista.
Everybody's needs are a little bit different, I mean, that, that is the truth of the matter. And, you know, just like with this contract and everything, we've been hauling it for a long time, and like I said, we run five routes a day and, and six or seven on Friday. We cover a lot of miles and, and it's, it's, it's hard on the equipment. I mean, you guys know, you, you know, from your fire trucks and your police cars and everything, you know, it's hilly, and some of those roads around the lakes and stuff, I'm like, I don't know how we get a truck down there. I'm glad I'm not the one doing it.
And, and do you drive most streets twice?
Yes, we pick up for safety reasons, arriving.
You've got the houses on both sides, you do, you do a dual-side pickup, so you go one way and you come back.
Yes.
So instead of 550 miles in a week for your vehicles, you've got 1,100 miles for your vehicles.
Yeah, the company, we used, we call that snaking, where you pick up one and then go over to the neighbor across the street, and the company as a whole, and most all of them, the major companies have gotten away with, away from that because of the safety issues.
They do it on the one way to make it easier.
Uh-huh.
Well, she said safety.
Yeah, it's the safety.
Although you'd have the trash, you'd have the trash carts all on the same side of the street, so you wouldn't have, wouldn't be picking up left and right, you'd be going down the street, you'd either choose the right side.
If, if we could ever get that accomplished, where they all put it on one side of the street, you know, but then you're putting your citizens at risk, you know, crossing back and forth.
One neighbor across the way puts the stuff over there, and then maybe it's not all contained, and it weeps out in the ground and-
Right, and there's a mess.
Yeah, it's just hard to handle. So you're optimistic about the 80 to 85%? Realistically, would we probably, we might think about projections of about maybe a half?
The only way you'll get that kind of participation is if it's, everybody pays. If it's subscription, I'm going to guess you'll be lucky to get 10%.
Well, e- even with, even if, even if everybody pays, the point being is that many may not choose to participate, or if they do participate, it's going to be not every other week, it's going to be once a month, once every three weeks, or six weeks, or whatever. So the frequency of putting a cart out, it's like those who have two, two yard waste units, sometimes they could use three, and, and then there's two, and then a lot of the times during the year, they only use one out of the two that they're contracted for.
Right.
So, probably the same for Recycle, is my guess.
Okay, said everything? Well, thanks, Jennifer.
You're welcome, not any of that information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next subject is Oldham Drive update, Dan Downey, Street Assistant Superintendent.
Got a couple printouts for the guys, those of you who look like to crunch numbers or look at numbers.
That's the traffic count that we did. I had one of our guys, Andrew Wilhelm, set up our traffic counter. He went out there on a Sunday afternoon, set it up, we ran it for a week, so we got the full work week plus the weekend. You can see there, results, targeted seven-day period, was a total number of 17,103 vehicles, average, daily average of 2,043. If you look on that second page, it actually breaks it all down even further. That was one of the things from last time. Also, I got with the water department, and they did a line test on the main line for Oldham. No leaks, no issues. They also did line tests for every side street and meter off of Oldham, they found one leaky meter, they fixed it that same day, and that was it. As far as the project, Mike Holman with TerraCon, who we've been dealing with, he gave us a call, asked if he could share our findings with another individual. We said absolutely. That individual was a area rep for a national firm, GSI, I believe it's Geo Stabilization They're a national firm that specializes in soil stability. Originally, TerraCon recommended against mitigation A option, the soil nailing. After visiting with these specialists from GSI, they came up with another option. It's basically soil nailing 2.0. Because of the shallow rock there and the inability to get a suitable anchor, we thought that wasn't going to be a long-term fix, that it would eventually start to slide, GSI engineers came in, looked at it, they said, "We can still do that," but what they do is they go in and they actually drill into the rock, and then set the pipes and grout them in, so they're actually secondary locked in versus just drilled into the rock. Don't know if that's going to be a cheaper option or not. One thing off the top, with GSI, their equipment to do this option removes the need of moving power poles. So that in itself, right up front, is a pretty good cost savings. We'll see what happens. Basically, where we're at now, GSI has sent over this change order, Mayor, I don't know if you got it yet or not, for your signature. Basically, it's a two-phase thing that they're looking at doing. The first phase is one through three here, develop two conceptual designs of 10% conceptual design, one for the soil-rock anchor system that GSI is now proposing, and the 10% conception design for the soldier wall piles that we talked about originally. They will identify any potential contractors, meet with them, collect construction cost estimates, then they will meet with us, will choose a mitigation option, and they will then go into the second phase. That first phase, one through three, their fee is a $6,000 fee for that. The second scope of it, four through seven, would be, once we choose an option, they will go through the design process, prepare drawings, get them stamped by professional engineer registered in Arkansas, provide the design and related calculations to go out to bid for whoever bids on it. Once the bids come in, they'll sit with us, go through the bid openings, help select a contractor, any questions we have beyond that, that's kind of where we're at. That second phase is a fee of $22,000. So for both of these, this one change order, $28,000, we do have the original inspection earmarked under one of our new road construction accounts. We can also earmark this into that account and cover it at this point, but once something was designed and we chose to put it out to bid, we would then be coming for a budget adjustment and get everything covered under one package.
So can you wrap that up in a memo to us?
Sure.
Maybe.
Yep.
I thought you've said a lot, I mean, you've given us a lot of stuff here.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot, but it's still, kind of, we're waiting to, for more answers.
Do you need to wait for more stuff before you give an approval on this, is that it?
Yeah, we're, basically, we can wait for the 10% conceptual drawings and kind of go from there.
So, and there's, it's, you don't have any, any change order to get to the 10%?
Yes, we have a change order. Mike Holman was supposed to be sending that over for the mayor's signature. We weren't able to get ahold of him today, so I don't know where that's at, but basically to actually get the two different concepts drawn up that are 10%, choose one, go full design, full engineering, stamped, out to bid, we can cover all of that with the account we have earmarked.
So, how, how, or who are you going to, who or how are you going to make the choice between the GSI proposal and, and the one that's currently there? Are they going to do a-
One of the key factors off the top, I'm sure, is going to cost.
But there's still conceptual costs, because you really-
Yes, yes. Those conceptual costs was $6,000, once one was chosen and it went to full design and stamped engineer drawings, that second phase was 22,000. Like I said, we have that construction account within our budget, that we can earmark that in and, and cover that at this point. But, yeah, once we have the 10%, we can kind of see what the design is, what information they've been able to gather for cost estimates, and kind of go from there. Good, any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. So that's in process. Our next one is update on alcohol tax study, Councilmember Shane Newport.
Hello. Okay, so we did some napkin math, we're using some data that we got from local sources about what an alcohol tax would roughly yield, and it's going to only be about 10% of what we need for the $500,000 to further staff and support our fire department operations, right? The goal was roughly to get $500,000. So, I'm not sure if I have the appetite to go after an alcohol tax that does not meet its intended need or use.
So, you would bring in, take the, about the decay, and then come a year to the city? What would the cost be to like, do we know what the, does that cost cost, or?
We estimated there really wouldn't be any cost.
Not significant. But I, I want to, you know, you and I had a conversation, I said I needed some more time, there were some things that got in the way. But one of the things I, I found out is that there, I should be able to get the alcohol sales tax revenue for the city of Bella Vista from the state of Arkansas. I should be able to get the exact number, not this estimate that we've been doing of, and so Jason and I are talking about, we may have to FOIA it, but we can get that number. They collect that number, we can get it. So, we were told originally, we couldn't get it. I think I mentioned that to you, is that we were told we couldn't. But I went back and started doing some research, and I said, "The number's right there. Somebody's got that number." So, I'm, I've made calls, I've left messages, and I have yet to hear back, and so, we're going to continue, because, because, you know, based on our preliminary numbers, it's not a lot of money. If we went and did 5% or 10%, it, it doesn't come up to a lot of money. But, it'd be nice to know what it is in 2025, or 2024, for 2024, so then we can see, because as you mentioned, Shay, when we started this, that we expect that number to continue to grow with what's happening with-
Hospitality increase in the city.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the trail, the trail thing, right? That we expect to see that number grow. So right now, we have 27 licenses in the city, and 11 of them are POA. And, you know, we have the, basically, you can round to $900,000. And $900,000, if we put a 5%, 5%, that's $50,000, right? You know, so we, so that would be $50,000 from the POA. And that's not, to Shay's point, that's not a lot. But, I, I really want to go ahead and finish this, so that we have a better understanding of exactly what it is, because that's just the POA, and I got to thinking about it, I suspect that there is another 100, I'm sorry, another million dollars floating around in this, in the city, in alcohol sales, right? I'm betting it's another, so that would put us at $100,000. Well, now that's not enough money to do what we want it to do, but it's a start towards that, and as we grow. So I just want to, I want to put a bow on it. Does that make sense? I just want to put a bow on it.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that.
Well, if we did it, would it go to the general fund, or would it-
It'd go to the general fund.
Correct.
You brought it in.
So, appreciate that, and, yeah, I definitely appreciate, feel free to continue it, I just wanted to kind of give an update that it, it's still, regardless of where the number lands, it doesn't come close to funding six additional firefighters. So, I didn't know if, I, I asked everyone, you know, last month, if you had any ideas, if we could discuss those, I didn't know, did anyone else have any ideas on, you know, additional funds of revenue, or ways to save, or be able to improve upon our staffing?
Maybe zoning, if we had more commercial zoning, like over by the Highlands and I-49, I don't know what it's zoned for, but I would think that maybe in the near future, that would be prime real estate for commercial, but I don't know if it's zoned for that.
Depends what the Cooper Land controls are over there.
That was my only other idea.
I mean, that, that literally is it, it's already a part of the plat, even though it's a large space for development, that open vacant block is probably a part of the plat zoning, so it would say, well, it's going to be residential or something like that, I'm not sure.
Taylor, mind?
There's a lot of R3 over there, a lot of unplatted land that was actually part of the acquisition, it's now blue crane runway.
When you say unplatted, you're talking about Cooper Land, unplatted land, or first party land?
As part of the acquisition, it's no longer Cooper's, it's blue crane runways.
Well, I understand, but it was Cooper Land before, so it's now become a part of the blue crane-
Acquisition, but not platted. So there's no land use.
And what do they choose to include, with the DOA amenities or not, is another factor in there, is that correct?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, if they go commercial, are they going to want the revenue as a POA member? Because right now, you can't get water utility a service if you're not a POA member, because of how the, it's recorded at the courthouse.
I don't know what their plans are for that land at the Highlands Center, I just know it's a part of the acquisition, it's unplatted, we have it zoned mostly as R3 apartments, things of that nature, it's in that zone, a lot of R2 duplexes are over there, however, the new property owner has not shared any development plans, but yes, to get water.
On the east side of the expressway, right?
On the east side of the expressway?
Yeah, is that what we're talking about?
What, you're talking about the Highlands?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we could, what I'm trying to talk about in my update on my item on the agenda is to discuss-
It's commercial property, you're talking about?
No, sir, no, no, I'm trying to discuss an update on alcohol tax and ways to, to fund additional firefighters. So I just wanted to open the floor, I, I think to your point, Travis, by the time we would get any meaningful commercial development in the city, I think at that point, we're due for additional fire stations and a whole new round of staffing there, so I, I like the optimism, I like where we're headed as a city, but I think it still doesn't really fix this gap now. I did do some research that I wanted to run by you guys about millage, so as a city, as a city council, we can pass up to five mills, and currently, we are at 3.81. So there is a 1.19 mill up to, and we can actually enact mills in any increment that we wish, and it just takes a majority of city council to vote on that. So I do have some info here, if, if we're interested in discussing that, but if we raised one mill, it would bring in revenue to the city of about 725,000. That would come at an average cost per household of $44 a year, which is way less than Netflix, I will say, and you get the benefit of life-saving care when you call 911. That's kind of where I'm at, but I definitely wanted to see what everyone thinks.
Then again, then it would go to the general, or fund, and then it could be-
It would be budgeted.
Across, yeah, all the departments.
I wouldn't be willing to vote for that unless it was a sure thing that the fire department would be adequately funded, so if, I don't know what that looks, you know, how I could put that in there.
You want it to be tied together.
Yeah.
I don't really answer that, do you, Jason?
What's the question?
What are you talking about?
The question?
If you raised the millage and the property tax, could you earmark it for a particular thing like the fire department?
You budget the money, you budget the money, so you, whatever the council does by majority vote, the council can undo by majority vote.
can undo by majority vote. So you may have the best laid plans of setting it aside on a budget line in the bank, but until the money, until, I mean, any future council could, you could change your own mind or a future council could change their mind, so, I mean, it's not like you could encumber it, I mean, it's not encumbered like a bond issue or something. You're not borrowing against it. It's, I mean, you're, I mean, you, I promise you don't know this, and Steve knows it because we've been around here forever, but that first general penny that you all collect in sales tax, the first, is it $100,000?
$750,000.
$150,000, the first $100, the first $750,000 that that collects is split 50% to the fire department and 50% to the police department. And that was the way that that sales tax got passed. Now, we collect way more than that, so, but if we ever got into a crunch where we actually collected that amount or less and could only fund the police and fire department, that's all you could fund. So we've sort of done that with a, with a sales tax, and the voters approve that, and so we're locked in. On this, when you're talking about something the council can approve or reduce, increase or reduce, and a budget that you can spend or unspend, or, I mean, there's really no way I can say you're locked in forever and it couldn't change purpose at some point. But yes, you could say, our plan is to take this extra mill we're going to collect and put it in a, in a reserve account that's going to be used for operation, for fire, for, you know, in three years.
It's just not permanent in the way that nothing...
Restricted funds, in other words, like...
Well, you can restrict it, you can also unrestricted.
So it would be assigned, it would be assigned, not restricted.
I'm sorry.
Because the council is assigning it.
So we would have the power to raise the millage and then decide in our budget process if that's how we want to spend the money, but none of it's permanent, we could reduce millage, we could increase millage.
And that $44, is that per household or...
That's just an average, so it is based off of a person's value of their home, so folks with million-dollar houses would see a little more of that, folks with lower valued homes would see a little bit less on that, but on average, we have 16,000 homes in Bella Vista, and so if this would raise 725,000, if we enacted an entire one mill, which of course we can do any increment up to 1.19, then it'll be based on their house, but on average, that'd be $44 a home per year. And an interesting and not fun fact is that we were actually at four mills as a city, but we had to take a reduced decrease due to some complicated legal structure that I'm sure Jason is begging to not have to explain.
No, I can't, actually, I'd be happy to, but the reason the millage had to reduce is because the property valuation went up so much, so our income increased on lesser millage because of that. It can only increase, can't increase more than 10% for complicated reasons, I'll stop there.
So we were, you know, the city council had passed up to four mills, but then we rolled back down, so we are now 3.81. So just wanted to see everyone's opinion on that.
So roughly like 0.6 mills will get us there to what the fire department, or can you not do it?
Yeah, yeah, no, we can do any increment.
Yes.
And it's a moving target based on valuation.
Not for me, it's like...
Okay.
So you say the $44 is based on the average, so what is the average value of the property?
About like $300,000.
Is that average value for properties?
Well, I gave you that number, and I, that is not, so I don't like using averages because an average is to take the most expensive house and the least expensive house and divide by two. This is, this is on the idea that the value that she's using is a house that is assessed by the county at $300,000.
So real value is $600,000?
Correct. Well, your market, Jason, remind me, because I'm getting all choked up about it, but remind me, your, the assessed value is 30% of market? Is that what it is?
It's 20%, I was wrong. It's gone up, it's 20%.
So, yeah, so that is a pretty expensive house in the city of Bella Vista, and there's not, I mean, bless it, I could tell you what, I can calculate the, thank you. Yeah, I am getting choked up about it. I can find for you what the median mode and, you know, that is for you for Bella Vista.
Average and median?
So that you guys...
Can I say one more?
Thank you so much.
Sewer.
We do need...
Sewer, you've got more than one need is what my point is, and so, and we're going to, there's going to be talk about that too, so I just want to, we, once we determine, I mean, we've kind of honed in, this is the only problem, you've got other financial things too that you don't want to neglect to think about, and it's your decision what it is.
That's a good point. We've got sewer, then we have water.
New streets.
Water comes served areas every now and then.
Our streets need some money too.
Did you want me to give you, because the last time I did this was for the last increase for police...
Get that half more.
Yeah, so I can go back through, because it's been a couple of years now since I did that analysis, and we just finished 24, so I could do, I could figure out what the average house, not the average, because I can, the median and the mode are for Bella Vista. I can do that, I can take the weighted average if you want me to, if that's something you guys would like to know.
I think more information is great.
Okay.
To everyone's point, there's a lot of concerns, a lot of issues in our city, like I highlighted last month, we bring in significantly less money than our sister cities, we have significantly less dollars per citizen than sister cities, and we have significantly more responsibility spread out over at least 45 square miles to police, fire, and street. Those, I mean, you've heard Republic talking about the strain of the size of our city to service it, so I, I mean, I think that to address all the issues across our city, commercial growth is coming and will be needed and used, but I do, I have concerns about where our budget's headed and our ability to service our citizens, and when I think about servicing our citizens, I think having a capable 911 EMT service when we have an emergency is the number one thing that we owe our citizens. So that's kind of my spirit behind this, and it would take a majority of us to address this, and I just wanted to get everyone's thoughts.
I think it's a great idea, because you said you were looking into the alcohol sales tax, and that you didn't stop there, you looked at the next option abroad, so I think it's worth considering.
If you were going to show them like what it actually looks like.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if everyone's aware of how the millage worked, how much we can enact, the sorts of things, so I think it's worth considering.
Yeah, the other thing about the millage and the property tax is it comes up in October that we have to tell the county how much it is.
And it takes a year for the, for that money to hit our coffers. One other thing to think about, and you haven't asked this question, but just kind of throwing it out there, is that we could, because, you know, the idea is that Blue Crane is going to increase commercial, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and that we're going to see an increase in, in sales tax revenue from the explosion of commercial coming to our city soon, by soon, I mean five to six years from now. So one of the things that we could do, and I've heard of cities in Arkansas doing this, and that is that you can enact a tax for a certain period of time. But I don't know, can you only do that with sales tax, Jason, or can you do that with millage too?
Sure, I mean, the city, when it comes to millage, up to five, five generally, so you've also got other, I mean, we've also got the fire pension, the police pension, which are one each, and then there are, which we don't collect, there's a way for the library to have a millage up to five of its own with voter approval to operate a library system, so you have that. But in terms of the basic five, the council can raise it or lower it, and say, "We're going to put it up to five for five years, and then our plan is to reduce it down to four" or something. Yes, the council could do that. Anything, any tax other than that require voter approval, and it could be time limited.
I do have the average millages too, like by county and by city in Benton County, and then also state-county averages, but our city, the average millage in a city in Benton County is 4.6, and like I mentioned, we're at the 3.8, so we are lower than other cities in our county.
Taylor, we don't, we don't have assessment fees, like on new construction for our city.
Impact fees.
Impact?
We do have impact fees.
Okay.
Yes, for all new construction.
What is, what is the cost?
It varies by you, single-family commercials, dwellings, it's...
Okay.
And impact fees have a very specific...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I still think the best way to increase the city's revenues is to have more commercial, you know, entities here, so whatever we could come up with to make that more of a possibility.
I completely agree, but my concern is, to Kim's point, by the time we see those revenues come in, our city will have grown six more years, and with the population growth that we're on, I just worry that our city's resources will be extremely strained, so that's my concern, and I feel like I'd be doing my job if I wasn't expressing that to the rest of you and seeing what we all want to do about it.
Absolutely.
Steve, can I ask you a question? How many years you been with the city of, or with Bella Vista?
Almost 30 years.
In those 30 years, has the fire department ever had exactly the number of people they needed to have?
I could imagine that.
Steve, do you have any other comments you'd want to say?
Thank you for looking into this.
Which is in the gap, isn't it? For all the decades we have.
Yeah, that was a good discussion, that's good food for thought, I think, and anybody have anything else, or else we can adjourn the topic.
What's that FOIA?
I was just gonna, this really isn't a discussion item, because I'm not, it's just more for information. You all adopted a rule change here a couple of months ago that would allow you to attend remotely or to have a remote meeting in full or to attend remotely. The state has amended the State Freedom of Information Act law, which will no longer allow that. So we're going to need to, before probably August, this hasn't taken effect yet, go back and look at your rules and change them. I can't give you the reason why they felt strongly about that particular thing, but they did. I mean, they said, "Accept as provided," and this statute is a mess, and the mayor looked at it as, well, he's an attorney as well, and this is one of the most convoluted, poorly written messes that I've seen in a long time. No, I mean, no disrespect to whomever may have written it, I think it was a, it's a writing by committee, basically, there were a bunch of amendments and different people pulling and adding and stuff like that, and so they ended up with a result that's no one person's draft, it's cobbled together. Anyway, "Accept as provided in very limited circumstance, a member of a governing body shall be physically present at a public meeting to be counted for purposes of establishing a quorum or to vote." And it specifically says that other governing bodies, other, excuse me, other than governing bodies of municipalities, counties, or public school districts, a governing body may adopt a policy permitting the governing body to attend a public meeting remotely, but it says other than governing bodies of cities. So they specifically said cities, counties, and school districts are not allowed. And so, make of it what you will, I went, when I read this initially, I did not realize that they intended to stop remote participation. And I'm reading this, and I was getting confused, and got on our list with our other attorneys, we have a little listserv, and, oh no, you know, they specifically intended to do that. And so I went back and looked at the debate in the Senate, and that's exactly what they intended to do. They did not, they were not going to allow cities to do that. So I say all that to say this, this is information for you. There's also more to this, and I'll be able to, it's not going to drastically change much of how you associate with each other, but it did provide some definitions and things to, sort of concepts we've been carrying out anyway. But we will need to look at a rule change back to comply with state law before the end of the summer. So, sorry. Can't really do anything about it, so this is...
I'm surprised we didn't see that coming.
Was there a, I forgot which bill was this counter, keep up to the three-pack sessions, but there was one that was related to tiny homes and...
Oh, the accessories, they did adopt a rule, Taylor, about accessory dwelling units.
Yeah, the ADU passed, but the modular home one, I think maybe is what you're talking about, perhaps?
Maybe.
That one got put for indefinite study, so it didn't pass, it got sent to a committee for study for the next session. I don't have any updates on that.
Okay, no like major changes to...
The ETJ was the biggest one, the ADU had some pretty good stuff in there, but our consultants already have it, and they're writing in a tour one on mine right now, so that way it should be hopefully good to go by August, whenever it goes into effect. That was really the big one that changed in terms of our zoning and developed code.
Yeah, ETJ is extraterritorial jurisdiction. She's used to using those words, is it right? Okay, well, I think we can adjourn then, we'll see you next week.
Thank you.